Okay, hello and welcome to the January seventh, two thousand and twenty five work session. Four P M. Work session. Uh, we have all council members present with the exception of council member Blair and vice chair White, who vice chair White's coming up on the train, so she should be here shortly. I haven't heard from Bart any, I don't know. There he comes. There he is. So. We'll go ahead and do a quick agenda review for the six P M. City Council meeting. And. The some minutes by to review council member graph and council member hire. Hopefully you've had a chance to review those minutes. And then we have a request to be on the agenda. The audit report. And Jeff from H B M E will be here to present on that. And then Justin presenting on the two thousand and twenty three, twenty four annual comprehensive financial report. Uh, following that, some reports for administration. Couple of items here. Uh, the proposed amended infill housing guidelines. And. Uh, the six oh five North Jackson Concept Plan. Uh, proposed campaign finance ordinance amendments. And then the last item in that mirror, you're here to talk about that one. So the path proposed path program.
Yeah, real quick, just to request that we pull that from the agenda this evening. Just we're just getting a few of the documents together and. Linda's not here today, so when she not available today, so we'd appreciate just pulling that off for a week.
Sounds good, so we'll, we'll go ahead and pull that from the agenda and. Um, after that, we've got public comments. Any questions on the meeting? All right. Good enough. Um, first up on our work session, we have the Weber Housing Authority. Uh, discussion on the resolution and Andy Beatles is here. Um, to talk about that, so we'll go ahead and welcome Andy. Andy up. You want to come up to this microphone here? And we can have this discussion. Welcome back. Happy New Year, everyone. Yeah. All right. Oh, yeah. Here we go.
Okay. Do you want me to?
So, yeah, so, yeah, maybe just set. We can just set this up. We we had a, we had this uh, at the in the council meeting. And just a number of questions. We felt like we wanted to have a little bit more discussion.
Yeah.
And so I think we had sent some questions over for you to review, and I don't know if you want to go ahead and just address, address those.
Yeah.
And then uh, we can have some further discussion here.
Sure, just do you just want me to read through them?
Yeah, we might not all have the same of the question. So if you have.
Yeah, if you just, yeah, yeah, that sounds good.
Yep, I'll ask the question. And yeah, there were two emails with questions. So. The first one is what would be, what would the requirements or rules for en- entering and staying at the facility be? And I did bring our tenant screening criteria. Would you like a copy? Or do you just want me to read it? What would be easiest?
Maybe.
It's, it's two pages. Right back, so four pages total.
Maybe let's distribute that and maybe just hit some of the highlights.
Yep.
Yeah.
So the, yeah, I'll just kind of go through. So the criteria to get into the facility and. Our individuals have to be extremely low income. They have to be chronically homeless as defined by HUD. And then they have to have a disability. And then it lays out the, you know, the criteria for a disability.
Ability is, yeah.
Yeah. Yep. And then in addition, it talks about the application procedure. And then if somebody is denied, how they can appeal that process and then um, considerations or circumstances for reasonable accommodations.
Okay.
Yeah. So. Any questions about that?
Yeah. So who does that script? So you do, you do that initial screen?
The Housing Authority does all the screening. Yes.
And then do you, on a regular basis, I'm just, this is more my curiosity on a regular basis. Do you see if they are? Out of those circumstances that put them in there in the.
Yep. So once a year, we pull their background again. And however, the individuals in this facility, we will know if they're involved in criminal activity. Because we'll be with them on a daily basis. So we would know if there was criminal activity.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Any other questions on that related to that one? Just appreciate that. Yeah, we'll look at those criteria.
Okay. The next question is if a resident is found to be out of compliance with the rules, what actions will be taken? And this is taken from our supportive housing operations manual. And it states violation consequences. Individuals found to have violated any policy or house rule may face consequences. Which will include warnings, written notices, counseling, conflict resolution training, suspension of privileges and or services. And eviction from the project. Any questions on that?
How long might it take from point A to point B? That was a lot of kind of circumstances that. Might bring about an interaction. So. Is there anything that's a fatal error?
Yes.
That gets them immediately.
Uh huh.
And I. Remove from the program? And how long might it be if it was a kinder, gentler, longer?
Sure. And it will depend on the criteria that is, I mean, it will depend on the rule that is broken. But anything that causes danger to the safety of staff or other residents will be like expedited. And they'll be asked to leave the program immediately.
Okay.
And that is, so the next question is, will there be a limit on the number of violations a resident can have before being removed from the program? And that's the answer is if anybody, if they're the health or safety of any members of the current um, residents or of the staff.
Okay. So is um, and this might be covered in the document you did uh, that was passed out. Or it might be a question upcoming, but it has to do with sobriety. Do you require sobriety?
We do not. No.
Will you allow alcohol within the building?
We will not. No.
What would be the penalty for uh, drug use in the building?
Well.
Or alcohol use in the building?
Yeah, so they, you can't, they will not be allowed to have drugs or alcohol on the facility, so on the grounds. So if that um, were to happen, then we would follow these violation um, consequences.
But something like that is not an immediate dismissal from the program?
Uh huh. No. So they would receive a notice and s- and I think I had mentioned, the goal of the program is to keep people housed. So our goal is to educate, help them understand. They, there will be consequences for that. But then um, they'll be given the opportunity to correct the action and then hopefully it won't happen again.
Thank you.
Can I follow up with that? If it's an illegal substance, would they, the police be called?
The police would be called.
So they would have the same consequences if you were living anywhere else, correct? And you would have that on you. Yes. Alcohol, obviously, is different, but if it's an illegal substance.
Any other clarification on that one? Okay. I'll just keep moving through. Cat, will or could there be an instance when someone enters the residential facility directly from jail or prison? And the answer is no. So all participants have to come through the coordinated coordinated entry process. I may have mentioned this, but this is our community homeless waiting list. So all housing service providers house off of this waiting list. Um, and in addition, um, the screening criteria requires that an individual is homeless for a year or longer. So they will have to be out of prison or jail for at least one year, living on the streets or in the shelter before they will qualify for the project. If that were the case, but they will not come directly from jail or prison. And. Let's see. Yeah. Any questions on that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just keep moving.
Yeah.
Um. Explain Weber Housing Authority's past relationship with Weber County. And since two thousand and eight, Weber Housing Authority has been a department of Weber County. This has been a little bit tricky because the Weber Housing Authority is governed by a board of directors. And so we weren't um, held to the same standards as the other departments in Weber County, which caused some. Confusion about our entity. But we are now in a position to be self sufficient, and so we are separating from the county. And we don't need the administrative support. We are financially secure. And and we have decided to separate from the county. But questions about that?
When you say financially secure, are you, were you a budget line item in the county? Were you receiving funds from the county?
No.
You were totally self supported, even though you were under the umbrella?
Yeah, all of our um, now in the early years in two thousand and eight, we were receiving funding from the county. But the support that we were providing or that the county was providing was in the form of administrative support. So we utilized the treasure to deposit our checks. And we utilized um, you know, the clerk auditor. Um, but all of our income, what is from grants and the federal government.
Thanks, Andy.
Uh huh.
What about other administrative things like payroll, I T, H R?
All of those kinds of things the county provided.
And so going forward, it'll all be self sustained within the.
Yeah.
Authority.
Yeah. Any other questions about that?
You still have some admin, some responsibility to the county? I just, the reason I ask is because you have a county commissioner on your board.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's a stat, that's a state statute. So we do have to have an elected official. So one of the commissioners will be appointed to our board. Yeah.
But there is, is there any other accountability to the county at all?
Uh huh.
What about Weber Human Services?
No, they're their own entity as well.
But they also provide you some of the services that. That come through we, through Weber Human Services to those, some of those vulnerable.
So we partner, but they provide, so they specialize, you know, in the mental health and the substance use treatment. So they provide those services and then we provide the housing piece. It's a great partnership. And we've actually been housed at their, on their campus since two thousand and eight, which has been a great fit. And because we do serve the same population.
So are you becoming a five oh one C three? Is that what?
No, we have a five, we have a five oh one C three, so we have a nonprofit arm, but we're considered um. Uh, a government entity, so a public body.
Okay.
Yeah. Good question, though. Any other questions about that? Okay, the next question is, will there be any support from the county in the future? And um, I don't think so, but if we needed it, I'm sure we could ask the county for support. Again, we'll have a county commissioner that will be appointed to our board. And and so it's, we're not leaving on bad terms. We're, it's very amicable. And and so if we needed some kind of support, they would provide that to us. Okay, the next one is how many offices are proposed for the Aspen facility and who will be, who will those offices house? So currently, the Housing Authority has four and a half staff. And um, the public portion, so there's two portions. There's a housing portion and then the public portion. And the public portion will house two point five of those staff. And then the um, housing facility will, will provide um, offices for the two remaining staff. Plus the caseworkers that we will hire to assist with the project. So in two separate locations. Public and then the housing space, the living space. But questions about that?
Will you be office there?
Yes, that's the next question, actually. Uh, will the office serve as the primary office space for staff and the executive director? And yes, our offices will be located there in the public space. Yeah.
Did I, I feel like I heard somewhere, or maybe you told me this, and I apologize, I can't remember which, that um, there may be an opportunity to have a space for Ogden Police Department. Or their advocates on site as well?
Yeah, and Anna did offer um, to, if there was a community police officer that wanted to have space there, there is plenty of office space. And we do, I think I had mentioned that we do have space for um, our community partners. So um, for sure, Weber Human Services, they'll have space there. The Weber County Sheriff's Office will have space there as part of their reentry team. Um, and then additional office space as well that yes, could be available for O P D. Yeah. Any other questions on that? Okay, the next one is please describe the security plan for this facility. Will the sheriff's office provide any security? And this Weber County Sheriff's Office will have space available to meet with participants in the facility. And and we expect that they'll do some training, um, but they will not provide security at the facility. We do have a security system and the staff can access twenty four hours a day and all areas will have camera cover, coverage with the exception of sleeping rooms. And and then we will hire a security and maintenance person if needed, but we don't feel like. We, they will be in, we don't feel like that we, with the amount of case managers and staff, that we will have security issues. And but if we do need to hire one, we do have funding available that we could hire a security person. Any questions about that?
You have, you have board members with security background as well, correct?
Yes. Yeah. Okay, the next question is please identify any other sites that were initially considered before selecting the Ogden site for this facility. So Robert Bolar was our Realtor at the time. And he provided me, me with the list of properties that were approached, discussed and considered. Um, for purchase. And so I'll just go ahead and read those. So Comfort Suites, the address is twenty two fifty South, twelve hundred West in West Haven. Big Z Motel, it's called something else now, but that's what it was called at the time. Eleven twenty three West, twenty one fifty South in West Haven, The Sleep Inn, eleven fifty five South, seventeen hundred West in Marriott Sladeville. Comfort Inn, seventeen seventy six West, twenty five fifty North, Far West. Days Inn, thirty three oh six Washington Boulevard here in Ogden. Motel Six, twelve oh six West, twenty one hundred Southwest Haven. And Crestwood Care Center, thirty six sixty five Brinker Avenue in Ogden. Any questions about those properties? Okay, the next question is in reference to these properties as well, and it just says, what criteria did the Weber Housing Authority use to evaluate sites? For suitability for the project. So we were looking for a project that was self contained. Meaning that all services could be accessed onsite without access to the public space. So we needed to have like kitchen, kitchen and laundry and entertainment and socialization, but contained so that the um. Public space was separate from the living space. We did not want a facility whose units led outside, such as the Big Z Motel, but they provided a motel setting. A hotel setting um, to allow maximum oversight. We were looking for a large gathering area for socialization and plenty of space for case management offices. Um, we could not exceed forty beds. That was the maximum amount of in, of individuals that we uh, wanted in the facility. And then we could not exceed the purchase price of two million dollars. So that was the criteria is we were looking for a pri- for a property. Any questions on that?
I'm curious, um. If you considered, obviously, the price point was important here, but um, if you were considering building this from the scratch. How much do you, do you have an estimate of how much it might cost?
Yeah, so we are building a facility right now. Um. And uh, it is forty six units. This is thirty three units. The facility, the Aspen facility is thirty three units. Um, and it's sixteen million dollars. So new construction just costs more after you get the land acquisition plus the new construction. So we, we felt like an existing property would be in our best interest. And. Mostly for financial reasons.
Andy, the other project you're referring to is the project on Ninth Street?
Yeah, Ninth and Wall. Uh huh. Yep. Yeah. Any other questions? Were you gonna say something, Dave? Okay. Okay, next question. Has any renovation work been completed at the facility? And no renovation work has been completed. We have had three service projects helping to clear out the facility. We've had multiple break ins. With extensive damage, and so we've had to have. A lot of work done to get that damage cleaned out. And and then we did have to install a security system and the fire suppression system was damaged and we had to have that fixed as well. But otherwise, no renovation work has been done. Any questions on that? Okay, the next question is will each unit house one individual or can couples share a unit? One of the renderings showed a double bed. If so, what is the maximum number of individuals that can be housed at the facility? And the maximum number of individuals is twenty five. So couples will not be allowed to share a unit. If there were a couple that were to apply, which is very unlikely, but if there were, they would have a jack and gel bathroom, but they would each have their own room. And residents will not be allowed to move a significant other into their unit. And as I mentioned, no guests will be allowed um, inside the building. No guests will be allowed at the facility. Any questions on that? Okay, of the forty nine individuals on the Weber Housing Authority list, is it possible that some of them will or are being housed in Ogden Housing Authority's new P S H? And the answer is yes. Um. Like I said, all homeless housing service providers house off the Weber County Coordinated Entry Waiting List. However, when I pulled this, the forty nine individuals that were on the waiting list, it was after their facility was fully leased. So if individuals were housed from the coordinated entry waiting list, they had already been pulled off of this list and forty nine. Is the number of individuals that are remaining that qualify for permanent supportive housing.
So just to be clear, that's the property that's just opening?
Uh huh, soulless. Uh huh. Yeah, on thirty third and. Thirty first and Grant, I believe. Yeah.
I think it was like fifty eight, I can't, fifty eight units. So and. Yeah, or something like that. So in reality, there's about a hundred people that qualify, but fifty or whatever.
Well, and some of their units are also set aside for veterans um, that may not have come from that coordinated entry waiting list. Any other questions on that? Okay, please provide more information about moving from a scattered site approach to providing services to a consolidated, consolidated approach and how you will be doing this. We have not discussed this in detail at this time. I can provide um, information once our board has made a decision. There are six to nine individuals who I think I referred to um, during the city council meeting, who will move straight to the facility once it is open. But again, we haven't made a, a decision on timeline or what that will look like. But questions about that? Okay, if you implement the consolidated approach, will program participants be brought in from other areas of the county? Or will all of the participants come from other areas of Ogden City? So most of the individuals on the scattered site approach will remain in their units. And we'll just transition them from a permanent supportive housing voucher to a housing choice voucher. So they'll remain where they're at. With the exception of that, those six to nine individuals. And new participants could come from other parts of the county, but it's not very likely. Most of the, the homeless, chronically homeless disabled individuals already reside in Ogden City limits. And. And will come directly from the streets and from Lantern House. Um, let's see.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes, of course.
Um, when you say they're already residents of Ogden. I, 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 it seems like a nebulous thing to me when they're, you know, not housed. Does that mean that before, when they were housed, they were residents of Ogden? Or does that just mean this is where they plant themselves now? What does that mean?
Yeah, I think. That is a good question. It means both. Um, because when we do the point in time count, when we collect that data, the majority say that their last. Unit address, the zip code was eight four four oh one here in Ogden. And but then. Also, they could be living here because it's close to services, because they're close to resources. So it's both.
Okay, thanks.
Does that make sense?
Kind of, but it's, it's just hard for me to, to wrap my mind around this is where they are residents of, if they really have never really been a resident here.
Yeah.
I, I understand why they would maybe, maybe accumulate here, because it's best for their. Their way of life, but uh.
And so resident, maybe resident is not the right word, but this is where they are. Currently living, currently staying.
Okay, thanks.
Uh huh. Any other questions? Okay, um. How many projects have, let's see, and this was kind of worded funny. But it says, how many projects have placed in other parts of the county? I think what this is asking is how many properties does the Weber Housing Authority own outside of Ogden? And we currently own two properties and are in the process of purchasing land for our next affordable housing project in Roy. But any questions on that? And then the next question, I think, relates to this, but it says, how many units or people are being housed by through Weber Housing Authority in Ogden? And how many in the county? And I think what this is asking is of our vouchers, is this, is that correct? Am I on the right track? How many of our voucher holders reside in Ogden versus how many reside outside of Ogden? Is that what the council is looking for? Yeah, okay, so um. Weber Housing Authority currently has two hundred and eighty three vouchers scattered throughout the county, and then I broke this down um, by zip code. So Roy, we have seven percent of our participants, Ogden City, forty five percent of our participants. Harrisville, twenty two percent, Riverdale and uh, Washington Terrace, eighteen percent, and then North Ogden and other eight percent.
If you're breaking it down by zip code, that, I mean, it is concerned me because eight four four oh one goes all the way to.
It's true.
So is it by, does this track or is it by zip code?
So the way our system um. So the way our system breaks it down is by zip code.
So some of those in.
Yes.
Ogden could actually be other places, but it's hard to know.
Okay, yeah, yeah, for sure.
Andy, could you please repeat the last two?
Yep.
Washington Terrace, Riverdale.
Yep, Washington Terrace, Riverdale, eighteen percent. And then North Ogden and Other. Is eight percent.
And how is it that you, you don't have any housing in those areas, but they are former residents of those areas that are living in?
No, no, no. So this, so this is. And this, so that's why this question is a little bit tricky. So the Weber Housing Authority has two hundred and eighty-three vouchers. So we issue an individual a voucher and then they choose where they'd like to live. And in Weber County, and this is where they've chosen to utilize their voucher in the county. Any other questions on that? Okay, please explain how this project came to be. Discussions with the county, other partners, grant applications, et cetera. So in two thousand and nineteen, the Weber Morgan County Local Homeless Council began discussing the need for a single-site permanent supportive housing project. After the death of one of our very well-known homeless individuals. He died from exposure. Our group discussed how to help those that could not be successful utilizing the scattered site model. Commissioner Jenkins was the chair of the LHC. And when the homeless strategic plan came out, it explained that our community needed additional permanent supportive housing. The group began to discuss the funding sources and the options for a project. And then the Weber Housing Authority enlisted a Realtor to help with identifying an existing facility to purchase a facility. The LHC was involved through the entire process. And again, that, we started this process in two thousand and nineteen, so it has been a very long drawn-out process. So that, anyway, and then we started after we had identified the site. That's when we started to apply for grants and move forward with. The operating budget and making sure that we had enough funding to make sure that the property. Was sustainable and that we could make it work. So questions about that?
When the study came back, it said that. It was deemed that. We needed one. Do you mean the county? Or?
Well, so it's our, it's our local homeless council, which in Ogden City does have a seat at that table. Yeah. Any other questions about that?
The concentration of poverty in the areas is, is one of the huge concerns I think that we all share.
Sure.
And that seems to have been ignored when this site was picked. Can you address why that wasn't part of the criteria?
Yeah, we, yeah, we didn't look at that criteria when we were picking a site. What we were looking for, like I said, was the actual facility itself, but then something that was also close to services. So that the individuals could get to services. But no, we didn't consider income in the area as we were picking a site.
Who, who fills the seat representing Ogden City on the LHC?
Currently, Mara does.
Thank you.
At the time, it was Mark Johnson. Any other questions?
So I, I just, maybe as a follow-up. So I, I really like this concentration. No, you consolidated, sorry, not concentration. The consolidated. Model, I think, you know, the. What you told us last time you were here, ninety-two or ninety-three percent success rate and all of that. Explain to me, and I, I know you're not through all of our questions, but you, you kind of ventured into this. Explain to me why this could not be a model. Put anywhere. I mean, you keep saying that it needs to be close to services, but it seems like you're actually putting the services. In this facility. So, so tell me why, or explain to me why this can't be somewhere else.
Yeah, and we are putting some of the services so that they. Have greater access, especially to mental health and substance use treatment. So Weber Human Services is partnering with us on this and they will have. Offices there so that they can provide services. But things like, so this is a population that has to have access to their medications. And they have to be able to get to Weber Human Services who distributes their medications. They can't bring their medications to the facility. And so we have to. Have the individuals get to the facility. And. Service providers can attest to. When we tell an individual, hey, you need to go here and get this taken care of. Most individuals can make that happen, but this population cannot. It just, they are not cognizant enough to be able to get from point A to point B and then get point B. Accomplished, the task accomplished. And so we needed to be close to places like Workforce Services. Weber Human Services, the Social Security Office. Agencies like that so that they could still get to the services. Without having us have to bust them in, which would be an added cost to the facility or to the project. But also, would it make? Sure that the individuals, some of their services did not get, some of their needs did not get met.
But it still seems like it'd be far enough away that you would, you're still gonna have to transport somehow.
And for some of them, yeah, we probably will. We'll probably have to provide a case manager. But the time it will take to get two blocks away versus twenty minutes away. Is something that we had to take into consideration. Do, do you have a follow-up?
No, I, I might, but.
Any other questions about that?
So I guess I, to follow up, I think it seems like we're putting an old model or we're putting a new model in kind of an old. Thinking, and it just seems like we could start to think outside the box. I can get my prescriptions from Amazon delivered, you know, I just. It just seems weird that we're, we're, we can't. Put this model, which again, I think is a fantastic model in, in other places without. You know, that always has to be around services. And I, I think we're just not being, we're not thinking outside the box enough, so.
Just to clarify on the medications, though. These individuals have to have a shot medication every day. So it's, and they, a doctor has to administer their shots. So I, it wouldn't be something that we could just have sent to them. If they do have medications that can, sure, that would be for sure an option. But the individuals, especially the six to nine individuals that will be moving to the facility. It's in shot form and they have to get that on a daily basis. But. Yeah, but thank you. I appreciate them. Any other? Follow-up questions? I think I just have one more. Oh, did you have one?
Go ahead, yeah.
And how will this project and similar projects benefit Ogden City and its residents? And so this project will provide affordable housing for the most vulnerable homeless disabled individuals in our community. So it will get individuals off the street. They won't utilize emergency services provided by Ogden Police Department, the emergency room, paramedics, fire department, et cetera. And in addition, they won't be littering and leaving sleeping supplies and messes on Ogden City streets. Which is a waste of taxpayer dollars. They will be in a housing program. And I do want to stress, this is a program. It's not just a place that they'll be warehoused or that they will be living. This is housing linked with case management. And individuals do have to participate in programming. That will help them become self-sufficient. I mentioned this, I believe, in the presentation, but the cost to keep a homeless individual on the streets is three times more expensive than providing a PSH unit. And then in addition, Ogden City's homeless service advocates need places to house this population. This is a population that cannot be housed. At other housing complexes. We've tried that and it does not work. They require ongoing oversight and ongoing case management. And then in addition, as we rehab this facility. We have a local contractor, local subs will be used and hired out. As well as local case managers will be hired to work at the facility. And then we are hoping that this facility will be a community hub. And that the community will volunteer their time. You know, doing karaoke nights and ice cream socia's and serving meals and helping out. So that they can become comfortable with this population so that there isn't such a stigma attached to the homeless population. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just kind of thinking back on the, the six to nine that you have, that, that sounds like you have identified those. And those, where are they currently living?
So they are at our ship facility. This is. On, at Weber Human Services, so they have. A building that was not being used. And those were the individuals that kind of facilitated this whole, started this whole process where these are our.
Like a pilot group?
Yeah, yeah, our most severe, that we're being taken advantage of. And we, they've been staying there, but it's only a temporary, they can't stay there for. Forever. So those are the individuals. And yeah, and they're on Weber Human Services campus.
And then with the, there were some residents who expressed some concerns at the last meeting about maybe being able to see into the facility. Is there, is there a discussion about some shielding or some?
Yeah.
Or what's, what's looked at there?
Yeah, and that is one of our, we have to the. South of the facility is an apartment complex. That kind of causes some, has caused some issues with our, our facility. And so. Our first, one of the first things we'll do is put up fencing. So right now there's a chain link fence. And. But we're going to replace that and put up, yeah. So that. Not just for the neighbors, but also for our. Our benefit.
And then one of the concerns that I've heard often is just the proximity to the schools. So is that a concern? Or if not, why not? And is that also looked at when you were selecting the site?
Yeah. No, it won't be a concern. So the individuals, and they are, I think I mentioned, they're eighteen and older. But. There will be constant programming at the facility. So we'll have. Classes and we'll have, you know, social events. They'll be expected to participate in. Actively participating in case management services. So they are not. It's not like a show, it is a place to live, so they won't just be like turned onto the streets, you know, like individuals at, say, the Lantern House. So they will have. Things to occupy their time. They're not going to be wandering around at the school. Or even anywhere on the streets. For the most part. And I can't see it being an issue with, with the kids. The other thing. If there are any issues. Our offices will be there and neighbors are welcome to come in and chat with us and we will alleviate any issues that they have. We'll take care of it. If they feel like somebody's wandering too close to the school or something, we'll make sure that that's addressed. But I have answered that question a lot. So thank you. Any other questions?
So one of the things you said, and I, I think, I. I think you said. That you were gonna have case managers there. And I think, maybe I got it wrong, that twenty-four seven. So how many case managers is that?
Yeah, so we have three full-time case managers, one project manager, and then two resident monitors. So yes, there will be.
There won't be a case manager there.
So how it will work is we'll have a case manager. During the day and then somebody from like three PM to ten PM. And then so from the hours of like ten to six, then the resident monitors will be responsible for the staff or for the tenants.
I was just trying to think through, you said it was a one to eight model, so one case manager for eight people.
It's less than that with this population. Yeah.
One day.
So we have. Twenty-five and we have three case managers, so. Yeah, seven to eight, yeah. Yeah.
And then on weekends, there won't be?
No, there will be, yeah, there will be case managers on the weekends as well. Yeah.
I wanna. It wasn't part of these questions. You and I have had two interactions about projects that Weber Housing Authority has been involved with. And when, when you had the planning commission approval for the project on, on Ninth Street and Wall. You looked me in the face and told me that that was the last one you were gonna do. Do you remember that conversation?
I do.
And then we had a similar conversation at the planning commission meeting. Where this was being discussed. And you told me. That no, this wouldn't be the last one because the, the services are in Ogden, that's therefore these projects needed to be in Ogden. Do you remember that conversation?
So I didn't say this wouldn't be our last project.
Right.
I said I couldn't guarantee that we wouldn't. And I can't. I can't speak to my board. And I can't speak to the population and I can't speak to. The needs of the community.
Sure.
So what I can tell you is that we don't have any intentions of building any homeless. Projects in Ogden. In the future, in my future at the agency.
Okay. This is kind of a.
And also clarifying.
Okay.
When we had that conversation about the Ninth and Wall project, that was when we were proposing a homeless project. That is not a homeless project anymore. So that's just an affordable housing project.
I see. So what goes through my mind, though, with, with respects to this? Well, a couple of things that are concerning is, you know, that project got done without city council approval, which the state statute was in place at that time. I think we can take as much blame as you, probably.
Correct.
And this one, I suppose you didn't, you know. What was concerning is Gage actually acted like he was aware of the state statute. At our last public hearing in the, in the chambers. So, and he's on your board. So that's concerning to me that.
Gage wasn't aware of the statute.
Okay.
Our board was not aware of the statute.
It just sounded funny the way he said what he said, so I'll, I'll take your word for it.
No, we weren't, the first I had heard of that statute was when I got the letter from the city council.
I see, okay. But anyway, to the point that, you know, Ogden has, you know, Ogden Housing Authority is, is functioning in Ogden City Limits. And where, based on what you told me, Ogden, the services that you like to take advantage of are in Ogden City. Seems like it's a redundant organization to me. And I don't know why, why we would want two. Housing authorities working inside of Ogden City Limits. Just. Maybe you see it differently. And if you do, and there's justification, you can maybe help me understand. I certainly don't at this point.
Yep, so. How it's supposed to work is the Weber Housing Authority would cover Weber County. And Ogden City would cover Ogden City. We have an agreement with each other because it's in the best interest of the clientele that we provide services to. That they, our participants be allowed to find housing in Ogden City. And their participants be allowed to find housing inside Weber County. So we have an agreement that we provide services, you know, in both jurisdictions.
And, and you know, the. You, you kind of. Specified how your model was gonna work, how you intended it to work. And have people on staff in the, in the facility all the time.
Yep.
What happens when a predecessor to you decides, ah, that's a lot of work, we're not gonna do that anymore?
Well.
I mean, what, what is it to keep that from? From being the case? We changed our mind.
Well, the grant that we have that will provide the operating subsidy for the project is a fifteen-year grant. So that's what we'll pay for the case management for that fifteen-year time period. So. I mean. We've got fifteen years, I guess, to ensure that that's how it will be run. And then you're right, I don't, I can't speak to what they will do.
Okay, thanks.
Andy, doesn't the licensing that you're required to get from the state to run this type of facility, they'll require that outside?
Yeah.
So, and if it's gonna operate as it's proposed, the state requires residents to be there, I'm pretty sure.
Licenseur, yeah.
Okay.
So Andy, I, this morning, received a recording of what I believe was the Weber Housing Authority coordinating. And in listening to that, I believe I heard you say. That there are between seven and ten individuals that are currently housed in a collective place. And is that the ship facility that you mentioned?
That's a six to nine individuals.
All right. Thank you very much. And then I'm just gonna say something here that is germane to the project as a whole. And I know that the county is very focused on this project and the decision that city council is gonna make. And I also understand that the county has a plan that would circumvent the city council's decision. To do this project, ignoring the voice of the city council and by extension. Through us, the voice of Ogden residents. And I would like to invite. And I would like to invite Weber County not to run the end around. And avoid the opportunity or miss the opportunity to cooperate with the city that is its county seat. To resolve this issue. Ogden City has reached out and expressed in a desire to make this happen. Understanding that the collective objection isn't to the population or to your efforts as an authority. The objection, I'm speaking for others and I'll, I'll stand corrected if I need to. The objection is the where. And it's in our east central residential neighborhood, adjacent to schools, our library. It's in our nine rails district. It's a historic neighborhood. It's adjacent to our downtown. It's a neighborhood trying to climb up out of a state of disrepair and reinvigorate itself. And rather than run an end around and erode the working relationship between Ogden City. One of Weber County's most important cities and the county government. I would really like to suggest that rather than run an end around, you consider working with the city. And I understand that there are constraints around some of your funds and those two, I believe, can be solved. Again, with cooperation and interaction and idea sharing, uh, we can get over some of those hurdles, but. Let's not let this become. Rub each other's fur up the wrong way. Let's work together with this. Thank you.
I, I think that's a, maybe a, a good opportunity. I was gonna, I wanted to invite Mayor Nadolski up and just, just kind of talk about. I think Dave, you said it very well, that I think most of the council, or if not all the council feel very positive about the project itself. And the location primarily is, is the hang up. And so just in the, in the spirit of being collaborative and with the. Divided government, right? So now we've got both sides of the table here. Have a discussion on is, you know, is how critical is that site? And could there be things done to maybe do something different?
Yeah. Thanks for calling me up and thanks for your impassioned plea. Thank you for your answers to all the questions. I guess those were great questions, great answers. I, I had a lot of questions myself too, but that's either here nor there right now. I want, your comment made me think of something that I think I need to share. I think I have a perspective that, uh, no one else here has. I occupy a seat that is, uh, can be lonely. Right? But it's a, it's an honor and a blessing to occupy the seat. But what it means is that I share a perspective that I don't think anybody else can share. So I'm going to share it with you. You can agree with it or disagree with, with it. But I hope you'll give me some credibility with, uh, with what I'm going to share because I think it's. Very, uh, germane was the word you used to the success of Ogden City and the success of Weber County for the long term beyond this project. I just a few days ago or last week. Crossed the path of one year. Some days it feels like it was three years. Some days it feels like it was a month. But it's been quite a journey. And one of the things that I continue to experience is something that I believe has held us all back for a long, long time. And it's this struggle to coordinate between the county and the city. And it is. Coming up again, time and time and time again. And we have worked really hard with the commissioners and, and me to, to. Put together wins and projects together. And we've, we've made tons of progress there. It's a big priority for me. As you know, it's a priority for you. It's a priority for them. And we've come a long way. And I'm really was worried, and that was my mindset all along, when I'm trying to get to a solution on this project. In my first year. I have spent almost all of it with the inherited projects that we had on our plate to get them to started. Or completed or eliminated. And that has been the work of our administration all year long. I, our staff and team are working their guts out to do that. And we're not there yet. You've seen huge projects come out of the ground. And that is a result of a collaborative process across departments. And we've got big generational projects in the hopper. This is the result of the collaborative process across departments, but also across governments. So the thing that frustrates me most about this project. Is that we are struggling to find a way to make it work because we are living under the old paradigm. Of the city and the county not working well together while trying to move into the new paradigm of working well together between the city and the county. I have learned a lot around the independence of the Weber Housing, uh, Authority, Weber Human Services, and the Weber Morgan Health Department. From the, uh, county and the commission. I've, that has surprised me in my new, in my tenure. So not everything is as black and white and, uh, straight line as it might seem. My goal for all of us is, is to set a new course, a new direction for collaboration across city and county. This project continues to represent the challenge with that. And we're really stuck around the one thing instead of looking at the bigger picture. And that's why I share that context because there's a, there's a bigger picture here. And there's a lot of things at stake because of this one project. And what I keep hearing is that we've got a really, um, open-minded and willing and wanting city council. That's open to the collaboration and the, and the communication and to help support this kind of a project. We are not opposed to this kind of project in the administrative side. And what I'm hearing from the council and a few of the remarks is that you're not opposed to this project on the council side either. But I have long expressed concerns around the location and you are now expressing concerns around the location. And that is all was predetermined prior to my administration and what we inherited. And it continues to, to hold us back. It's the location. Period. That's the only thing that we're talking about now. This body has set. A, a, a set of parameters and policies around housing and around neighborhood development and neighborhood stability, community development to make Ogden better. We are all after the same thing to make Ogden its best self, period. And I believe that's what you want. And I believe that's what the county wants too. But we're fighting over how to do that. And it's all coming to a head in this one thing. And what's at stake? Is we've got representatives, representatives that are holding progress for our airport until this decision's made. Then what's at stake is progress on entire blocks of development for affordable type housing in places that it should be. Are now being held up because this isn't moving through. And so there's this political maneuvering happening. It's holding progress in order to get with a, what somebody else wants. And that's not the way that we're going to become our best, period. But that's where we continue to find ourselves. That is got to be a thing of the past, has to be. So when we worked with Andy. My mindset was we've got to get to a solution. And this has got to be the last, like you were just mentioning the conversation that you had. You had some comfort in that moment that it would be. It wasn't. I've had assurances that it would be and it wasn't. We're all looking for those assurances because there is redundancy. And what is lost, lost in this whole conversation is that this city, including this administration and this council. Every single day is supporting projects of this type all over our city. Tomorrow, there's an event to, uh, to go visit the one that you guys mentioned on Thirty First Street. That's a project we fully supported and we're super excited about. I can't wait to go attend there. And they gave me an opportunity to speak and I took it because it matters. But all that's lost. Because we're fighting over the one location. All because in the past, we didn't coordinate and collaborate. So when are we going to turn the page? When are we going to be a city and a county that's finally on the same page? Because if we had been at the table, this location would not have been chosen, period. And the table that we are at, to your point, is the Ogden Housing Authority. It's our, it's got our name in it. You just explained the intended purpose of the two. So when is the Weber Housing Authority going to work in Weber County? And when is the Ogden Housing Authority going to work in Ogden? Because we've been working under the model that we're going to work with the Ogden Housing Authority in Ogden. So why is there redundancy? And why do things continue to happen to us in Ogden? People wonder why we have a chip on our shoulder. One, people don't believe in us sometimes. Two, because things happen to us instead of when are we going to get to a point where things happen with us? If that had happened long ago, we wouldn't be in this position today. So if you ask me right now, I understand that we, we worked with Andy to try and mitigate the impacts and concerns that we were hearing. It's not enough. I, I get that. And it's for valid reason. So if you were to ask me today, well, what would be the answer? And I'd say, let's be at the table from the jump. Let's expedite it. Give my team and my administration the real opportunity, not to just make it work in the current circumstances. But give us an opportunity to choose a location that does work. Give us an opportunity to be a partner. I've made that offer and it's been rejected. And in response, it's, we're just not going to give you the other things you want. Is that really how the people of Ogden and Weber County want us working? No. But that's the answer we keep getting. We've got to unburden ourselves from that. Or we're always going to be in this situation. We either have to support what someone else loves and that we don't like in order for us to get something that we like and they also like. That makes no sense whatsoever. Anyway. We'll see how the media in the room reports on all that. There are no talking points in that. That is just. Uh, my reality as the mayor of Ogden City. And that is the leadership challenge I inherited and that I take upon willingly, happily. But it's time that we start doing things differently and doing things from the jump on the same page. We want to house people. That's why we're supporting so many projects in the city. We just want a seat at the table. That's it. Like, can, can we finally, if this isn't the way to go, I get it. I share the concerns. Can we, can we, Andy? Can we have a chance to do it again, do it right and do it with everybody on board? Can we funnel our resources and our attention and our, our expertise and our support and our will? Find a location that works and make it happen. You, I heard in this conversation, it's the first time I'd heard it was. Was today is that those folks are housed. Thank goodness. While they're housed, let's find a place that we can house them permanently. A place that doesn't run contrary to the policies that this city's been working toward for a decade or more. Can we do that? Because I have really talented people, really caring and committed people that would love to have an opportunity to do that. That's all we've been asking for all along. So if this current proposal doesn't work for the city council, I have the opinion that we respect that. That's what we do in this city. And we don't trade one thing for another. And we don't play games through political gamesmanship. We let our proposals and our opinions and our character, our ethics stand on their laurels. Stand on their own. This project ought to stand on its own and so should everything else. Otherwise, we will always be held back by ourselves and by one another. I'm trying to chart a path for a new way. This is an opportunity to do that. And I ask you, if given that opportunity. Will you do that with me and with us, all of us? And finally be a city and a county that works hand in hand like we have been doing. And we have done so many other times with this administration and this commission. There are huge wins for Ogden, you guys. They're huge. Huge. We all want it. Let's take it. But let's not do it at the cost of anybody else or anything else. Let's do it in a way that does it together.
That, just make a quick comment for that.
Yeah, I was going to say thank you too. Um, and I was just going to say, you know, I appreciate everything that was just said, uh, on both fronts. I just, I, I do feel a little concerned that Andy's getting, um, burdened with all the responsibility of all the county. You know, all the county activity and everything that's happening in every other space or that agency. So I just, I mean, I just want to say, um, Andy's behalf that she doesn't represent the whole county and all politics. So, and, and I feel I've heard, and I could be wrong. I've heard that she specifically has come to the table to try to compromise and work through this with Ogden City and has made a lot of concessions. So I just wanted to put that out there because I know she's a great partner. So.
And we in Ogden had a seat at the table at the LHC. And, um, when we initially started these conversations, so they, they were there and they were participating. And I'm not aware, I am not sure what you're talking about as far as exchange of money, like holding money back. I don't know what that is about.
It's a long story, but what I'm saying is, and I'm not, I'm not, I want to own as much as I own. Like, I'm not afraid to own my part in all this. And, and nobody's perfect, but. We did work with Andy. I told you that. That's, that's what got us to the current. There were more units. There were not services onsite, et cetera. We'd hope those were improvements. I think they are. I think you can make an argument that it's not enough. I get it. And I didn't share all that to throw anybody under the bus. It's just a recognition of the facts. That there have been so much struggle for so long in the past that those dynamics have held us back for so long. That there's no money being held back. There's participation and approvals and projects that are being held back. Awaiting a decision here when, when really we could be making a decision to just. Not necessarily start over, but to, to have a stronger, uh, place that we could all. Agree upon because it's just the one factor location. You mentioned all those other locations. The one, the main policy of the city was never considered, you said it. Was never consideration of any of those locations. Why? If it's in other cities, they probably have other policies. I get that. But a lot of them were in Ogden. But our policy approach was never a consideration at that point. And again, not to throw anybody under the bus. That's all from the past. I'm focused on now and moving forward, right? But we are, we are burdening ourselves by the past still. Uh, and doing things the way that we used to do them, even though there's a lot of commitment, including from the commission in the, in the county. To do things differently. And this, this represents an opportunity to do that, continue to do that. We have had wins with each other. There's no doubt about it. We are charting a new way.
So I think, I think maybe the question, Andy, and you may not have the answer to this and, or maybe you do, but. Like, how tied to that particular property is this project? Is this something that the city, if, if, you know, this, with the administration and the council on board, working with. The county and Weber Housing Authority could purchase that property, identify another location, make sure we stay in compliance with the grants that have been approved? Is that all something that could happen and an alternate site, you know, be, be selected and still, you know, make, make it with the expedited process? Make sure everyone's whole, make sure the whole project moves forward. But just, you know, is that something that, that, that the Weber Housing Authority would be willing to consider? Obviously you can't speak for Weber County. Um, but yeah.
For sure. We would definitely consider that. I haven't been involved in any of those conversations. The biggest issue is our funding expires. It's ARPA dollars and they're, they expire at the end of June. And so if that, that money is not spent, then we lose that money. And so, um. I don't know. Again, I, I mean, I haven't heard any other locations. So I, I guess I, I don't know until, but it is something that we are willing to. And I think, I mean, when I met with, when I met with Mayor Nadolski, we, I mean, our whole goal has been to be collaborative. We want a project that everyone feels comfortable with. Before we closed on this property, I came to Ogden City and said, this is what we're planning to do. Is Ogden City okay with that? And they said, yes, that, yes. So I, I've involved Ogden City. Tried to involve Ogden City every step of the way. Again, I can't speak for the county. I can only speak for my entity. But yes, we're always willing to be collaborative and to, um, have a seat at the table. Um, it would have to be something that we would act quickly on because of the funding source.
Andy, is all of your money ARPA money or is just a portion?
Just a portion is. Yeah.
And how much of that?
It's five hundred and ninety thousand.
I, I guess the, thank you for that willingness. Are you, you're willing, it sounds like to, to, to try that, uh, go down that road as well. So.
Of course.
I, I think that maybe there's a, a possibility to get a win-win here in a.
Maybe.
Maybe. I don't know. I, yeah, I don't know.
You have to find a neighborhood that's willing to accept it. I mean, a lot of neighborhoods in our whole state, right, won't even have a warming center overnight. Where people sleep from like ten P M. to six A M. So I think that, you know, that's the barrier there. Is it, you know, maybe on the East Bench, that's not an area of concentrated poverty. Maybe there's a location. Is it, you know, maybe on the east bench, that's not an area of concentrated poverty. Maybe there's a location there.
I, I can only speak for myself, but hey, I'd, I'd go to extra meetings to expedite whatever can be collaborated and agreed wholly on to get this to happen. I you know, I, I really think that that's, that is the deal killer for me is, is where it is. I also, but when I went to the public hearing, there was many that came and we says, yeah, we know Ogden's carrying way more than your share. But that was, there was always the but. And it's time we, and, and I know the state statutes is, is going to be a limiter for you. I mean, that's going to be based on what you just said. I mean, a lot of neighborhoods are going to say, no, we, not my, not in my backyard. And so there's going to be some things that, that help this thing to, to work. But I think it's gotta, we've got to look at, at spreading this around a little bit.
I agree. And I, I think part of it is this misconception. And I think that's one of the challenges that I think I've been trying to help advocate for too, is to understand that this is and again, this is kind of a challenge because I also serve on the Lantern House Board. But I understand how people perceive Lantern House and the land around it and the impacts it's had on the neighborhood. And that's frankly, all of our responsibilities. It's not, you know, it's not one person's problem. It's all of ours that that's that way. This is not that. And so I think that's also it is to understand that it's a very different type of project than how that infrastructure is set up, that, you know, the people are indoors, they're, they're getting made, you know, this care management 24/7. It's very different than, you know, someone that has to I mean, I don't know if everybody understands how the homeless services system works, but at Lantern House, at 6:30 AM, you leave the facility and you come back at a certain time in the evening. There's not those kinds of programs and things happening for people onsite during the day. So that's often what happens in my neighborhood in Lester Park. People come and congregate there or they go to the library because maybe they're looking for jobs and doing other things too, but they don't have anything else to do all day, right? So this is a very different type of facility. So I think that's also something we have to try to educate community members about, that it's not a similar situation to what we see in the Lantern House area right now, or in those kinds of situations where people might be milling around or, you know, these different things. And then also just to realize that I think that we do, just as people have fears and concerns, if we haven't been proximate to other people that have been in these situations, that that's, they're not always dangerous or criminals or people that are on drugs that people that are also people that have, don't have shelter, you know? And so I think that's just a challenge that we have in our entire nation, right? Because it's everywhere that this is a problem. So. I was also gonna mention, I noticed that Rob, Bob Hunter arrived here and he is on the board of Weber Housing Authority. If anybody, I don't know if there's any other board members here, but if anybody wanted to ask Bob any questions.
All right. Well, I think I think i- if that's a possibility and, and, and you know, even you know, maybe a lesson on how our, our city government works, where you have an executive and a legislative side. You know, it's, we always appreciative on the legislative side when, if someone's talking to Ogden, they're talking to both executive and legislative. That way there's more of that. And that's, that's may, may, I guess primarily the reason we're in this position right now anyways. But and maybe this location ultimately becomes the right location, but if we can work together to maybe select an alternate source or an alternate site, I think that's a, a great opportunity to move forward with this project. And I don't know, Mayor, if you have any ideas you'd like to share at this point or?
Well, it, it dawned on me not long ago, and I mentioned this to you when I ran into you at lunch, when you were meeting with who knows, all, everyone else to talk about the exact thing we're here to talk about. Everybody's getting, everybody's getting in their corner. Well-heeled. Got our supporters. Let's just buckle down in our corner, right? That's what we've been doing. Just buckling down in our corners and it's come, it's just come to a head. You know, years and years of this has just come to a head. So but about that same time, the day that I mentioned it to you when we were at lunch, we were, I was at lunch for a completely different ran into the U2 and others.
And you.
I'm like, oh, they're talking about me. It's okay.
We weren't talking about, we were talking about your project. Yeah, it was about the project.
We ought to be talking and we weren't, we were there for different things. And it's just, it's just a symptom of the thing, of the, of the issues. But at that same exact time, there was a, there's a request at the legislative level. There, anything and everything they can do to, to help with housing. That's what we're all focused on. And the legislature is working on like, well, what property does the government own that could be used for attainable housing? Ownership parcels, which again, if you're looking at housing policy for the, for Ogden City, we've talked about the consolidation of poverty. We're also after a more ownership product. There is, we're in a crisis, a number of crises right now. And providing opportunities for ownership is another one that that location actually would be perfect for. And we could do that through an RFP and actually achieve multiple housing policy goals. Anyway, at the time, the state was saying, what properties are owned out there by local governments as well? And what would local government be wanting to do? And so at the county level, across all of the cities and across mayors, we wanted to know what opportunities were out there and we, Ogden City agreed to do all that analysis for everybody because we were the ones that had the most resource for GIS. And so it we're sitting on, what I'm telling you is a, a full inventory of the, what we already own as a, as a body. And there was times where maybe there's an opportunity for property we already own that was intended for something else that didn't come to fruition. Maybe we can leverage that. Maybe there's a location in another city and someone who's willing to participate. Maybe we can leverage that and finally get to a place where we're all lifting together. Because you're seeing the struggle at the state level too. Everybody seems to agree and I, I believe that we all have an ownership and a, and a responsibility to mankind to help lift, to help with this. Everybody, not just a few. Not just a few that you can pack it all on and who doesn't have enough voices to defend themselves. Right? Because you end up with a few places and you're seeing the dynamic at the state level, just a few locations that are taking a lot of burden. And a lot of people are pouring it in. That's what's been happening to us. So we've got this analysis of all the properties we already own. We can do further analysis if we want to concentrate something around transportation corridors or proximities or whatever. We've got people that can do these kinds of things and help us. If this proposal is before you is not the answer, I understand. I'm just asking for an opportunity to
I think, yeah.
To get to a solution.
I think maybe we have this before us next week, but maybe this week between now and next Tuesday, if the mayor can work with the Weber Housing Authority in the county and, you know, we can have these discussions about an alternate site, then maybe we'll have some additional information that we can, can help shape that decision. If, if that's an ask and we're talking, we know it's a, it's a short timeline. We know that you've, you're under the gun, absolutely. And so you know, this, I don't know if that's something we can ask Mayor, if that's something that we could ask you to do over this next week.
Does it have to be next week? I guess that's the question too.
Well, we, I, you know, we could certainly, we could certainly continue the item or table it. However, we also recognize that they've got a short timeline. So we need to
I know, I'm just saying like in one week, there's some kind of solution that sounds like
It's tight. Yeah. But, but I think it, I think a week might give us a it'll give us a, a window into whether there's a possibility beyond, beyond just this spot. So
I'll leave, you control the agenda as the chair. I'll leave that to you guys. But the, but yeah, my commitment, the next week we'll do as much as we can. And I'm with you. Look, we as a community, a city and a county, we can't let ARPA funds go. We're not going to let that happen. I, in my view, I, I don't see anybody here wanting that to happen. So that's an important point for all of us. We're all on the same page.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Andy.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate that, that discussion. Up next, we have proposed purchasing code amendments. And Ruby, hi. Puerto Yano?
Yes.
All right.
Got it.
Our purchasing coordinator for management services. Welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, sure.
Awesome. Well, my name is Ruby Portiano and I am the purchasing coordinator with the Fiscal Operations Division and Management Services. I have been in this role for over seven years and I'm also Ogden City resident. Yeah. So my team and I, we've been collaborating with an ad hoc policy committee that includes representatives from the city attorney's office, comptroller's office and man- management services administration. With their expertise and support of the administration team, we are proposing revisions to the procurement code to reflect current market conditions, including inflationary pressures and supply chain disruptions. Note that the city's procurement code has not been updated for decades. So the proposed revisions aim to update the procurement thresholds or dollar amounts for purchasing goods and services to support city operations. This change is intended to enhance the city's purchasing power in a way that is aligned with the state of Utah's code and the purchasing thresholds of surrounding municipalities. Additionally, we seek to create greater efficiencies in the procurement process while maintaining a responsible, transparent and accountable approach to managing public funds. Our goal is to strike a balance between flexibility and speed while upholding fairness, transparency and sound stewardship of taxpayer resources. We anticipate that the time saved by improving our procurement processes will provide more opportunities. Happen there. Where is the mouse?
He's the arrows too.
Okay. There it is. What about that? There you go. So this change is intended to enhance the city's purchasing power in a way that is aligned with the state of Utah's code and purchasing thresholds of other surrounding municipalities. Additionally, we seek to create greater efficiencies in the procurement processes while maintaining a responsible, transparent and accountable approach to managing public funds. Our goal is to strike a balance between flexibility and speed while upholding fairness, transparency and sound stewardship of taxpayer resources. We anticipate that the time saved by improving our procurement processes will provide more opportunities to address other critical operational needs. So it is important to note that Ogden City operates on, under a decentralized purchasing system. What that means is individual divisions and apartments as subject matter experts on their procurement needs are the direct purchasers or buyers of the necessary goods and services. For purposes of code compliance, the purchasing agent with delegated authority to the purchasing office, my team, reviews all purchase requests, purchase orders, credit card transactions and city expenditure contracts. The municipal code four dash one sets forth the rules and regulations governing citywide purchasing. It establishes procurement thresholds or dollar amounts that define when written quotes are required or when a public bid is necessary. These provisions assist the procurement staff in determining which set of rules applies to any given purchase. So additionally, the code outlines requirements for insurance, bonding and other legal items. Also provides a framework for procedural compliance, accountability and contracting authority. So as mentioned, the city's purchasing code has not been updated to reflect current market conditions for several, several years. In fact, certain sections were last revised in 1994. That being said, the ad hoc committee conducted a comprehensive review of the municipal code as well as the purchasing administrative policies and procedures to ensure that they align with current market conditions. Our first step was to examine the relevant provisions within the Utah State Code. So as permitted by the code, Ogden City as a municipality possesses the authority to establish its own procurement policies. However, the state code also imposes certain limitations, particularly related to thresholds for public building improvements and public works projects. These limits are adjusted annually based on the lesser of either a 3% increase or the actual percentage change, percent change in the Consumer Price Index, CPI. So as of July 1st, 2024, the bidding threshold for building improvements is $64,313. And for public works projects, it is $200,979. Next, as part of our review, the committee conducted a benchmarking survey to assess the purchasing thresholds used by peer cities. This helped ensure that Ogden's procurement policies are competitive and consistent with practices in similar municipalities. So in this slide, the table provides a comparison of Ogden City's purchasing threshold against those of other cities included in the study. Keep in mind, the other cities in the comparison group are as follows. Fountainfall, Draper, Leighton, Murray, Orem, Salt Lake City, Sandy, South Salt Lake, West Jordan and West Valley. So the first column outlines the different types of categories of purchases or contracts, such as professional services, goods, general and other services, including construction, building improvement, public works projects and public works road construction. The second, third and fourth columns detail the purchasing thresholds, essentially the dollar limits or starting points where specific purchasing rules apply. Let's walk through the details. The second column, no quotes, this represents the first level where in no quotes are needed. So for category of professional services, Ogden sets a threshold of up to $4,999 or less than $5,000. Whereas the average threshold for other cities is $15,800, $50,800. For category goods, general and other services, including construction, Ogden City sets a threshold up to $999 or less than $1,000. Well, the average threshold for the other cities is 3,350. The third column is informal quotes. This is the second level where in informal quotes are, are required. For professional services, Ogden City requires informal quotes between purch- between $5,000 and $10,000. Well, the average threshold for other cities is between $13,750 and $79,000. For goods, general and other services, including construction, Ogden City requires informal quotes for purchases between $1,000 and $25,000. Whereas the average threshold for other cities is between the range of $3,350 and $35,000. The fourth column is for formal solicitation or public bidding. This represents the threshold where public bidding is required. It involves a sealed bid process, public bid opening or a selection committee to review the proposals. So professional services, Ogden City conducts a request for proposal, RFP, or request for qualifications, RFQ, starting at $10,000. Whereas the average public bidding threshold for other cities, $79,000. So for the category of goods, general, other services, including construction, Ogden City's public bidding threshold is $25,000. Well, the average for other cities is $35,000. For categories such as building improvements, public works projects, including road construction, Ogden City sets a uniform public bidding threshold at $25,000. In contrast, other cities have varying thresholds for these categories. So for more detailed information on these thresholds, we've included the full benchmarking survey in your packet. Also, we have captured the information in the next few slides. All right. So without going into this So without going into the specifics, um this slide in the following one provides a summary of the purchasing thresholds for professional services. So within Ogden City's code, professional services is defined as services provided by an independent contractor with specialized knowledge, training, and experience in a particular field. This definition implies that the contractor has attained expertise through prolonged and specialized intellectual training. Such services can cover a wide range of activities or tasks, including but not limited to research, development, design, construction consulting, studies, investigations, surveys, planning, and more. Moving on to the next slide. This table outlines the purchasing thresholds for goods, general, and other services, including construction. Being on to the next slide, this table. Um actually, the tables in this slide and the next focus specifically on public bidding thresholds for building improvement, public works projects, including road construction. So according to the state code, public works project means the construction of a park, rec facility, pipeline, dam, now other system for water, sewage, stormwater, flood control. However, the state provision does not include replacement or repair of existing infrastructure, the private property, or construction or repair, construction or repair at an international airport. So moving on to the next slide. So based on all this information we have gathered, here are the proposed changes to Ogden City's municipal code. So for the category of professional services, under new direct negotiation of contract, the current purchasing threshold is less than five thousand dollars. The proposal is to update to less than one hundred thousand dollars. However, there will be a requirement for due diligence, which includes submitting a written memo detailing the process for reviewing qualifications of at least three firms. Approval from both executive director and C A O will also be required. Additionally, if there are federal funds involved and the expenditure is fifty thousand dollars or over, a formal solicitation will be required to comply with the Code of Federal Regulations. So under the formal solicitation, the current threshold for professional services is at ten thousand dollars. The proposal is to update it to one hundred thousand dollars. Moving on to the next category, so for the purchase of goods, general services, including construction, there are several proposed adjustments to the threshold levels. So for no quotes, the current threshold of less than one thousand dollars is proposed to be updated to less than ten thousand dollars. For informal quotes, the current threshold range of one thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars is proposed to be updated to the range of ten thousand to fifty thousand dollars. For formal solicitation or public bidding, the current threshold is at twenty-five thousand dollars. It is being proposed to be updated to fifty thousand dollars.
Is it okay to ask questions now or should I? I was gonna say, I mean, that seems like quite a big jump on the professional services. Was there any consideration for maybe like fifty thousand or something like that?
That's a good question. Um I think we also considered what the state code and other cities were doing. They are actually utilizing um Utah procurement code or the rule. Um it is exactly what is being proposed, which is the one hundred thousand dollar range.
Welcome, Gary. We got a microphone for him there.
I helped with this. I was on this committee and um this was the number we were most surprised about when we looked at the state code, right? That ten thousand dollar number predates me and I've been here a long time. But it's just been around forever. When I when we looked at the state cor- code, it was exactly this. And we actually lifted the language right out of the state code. And the concept is, I think that when you're doing a contract for professional services, price is often secondary, to be honest with you, because you need to have somebody who's who's a real quality professional can do the work and that kind of stuff. And so the idea is it doesn't really work. It's just a price RFP. We do have a sophisticated operation for request for qualifications that you have to go through a long committee process to determine, you know, if they're qualified, and then you get a group of qualified bidders, and then you go to a price. And we we will still use that for the higher level of um a professional services, but at least the state and many others who have fallen the state have decided that hundred thousand dollars is about the right area to say, okay, you don't have to go through that very extensive committee process of an RFQ. Um but you do have to look at qualifications of at least three firms or individuals. And so that's kind of the balance the state did. We've seen that several other cities followed that. And so we just kind of use the same language. When I say the state, the state has a procurement code that we're not required to follow because we have our own procurement code. But nevertheless, it's very instructive as to what the what the industry standard is.
Great question. All right. Thank you, Gary. So moving on to this slide, for building improvements from the current threshold range of less than five thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars, the proposal is to update it to the public bidding threshold per CPI at sixty-four thousand three hundred thirteen dollars. For public works projects, including road construction, the current threshold is at twenty-five thousand dollars. The proposal is to update the public bidding threshold to two hundred thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars per CPI. As for bonding requirement for construction contracts, it is currently required at twenty-five thousand dollars. The proposal is to update it to fifty thousand dollars. So a construction bond is a financial and legal instrument issued by a shorty company that guarantees financial benefits for the owner of the contract. It found functions similar to insurance coverage. In our case, Ogden City requires bond documents to risk mechanism. The city requires a payment bond and a performance bond covering hundred percent of the awarded contract amount. A payment bond guarantees that subcontractors will be paid for labor and materials expended in the contract. This is also known as a labor and materials bond. Performance bond protects the city from loss in case of the contractor's inability to complete the contract as agreed upon. This is also known as a completion bond. Moving on to the next slide, so last but not the least, the proposed amendment will require written quotes for purchases at ten thousand dollars and over for it to be legally binding. The offer must be written on company letterhead. Any questions at this point? Moving on to the next slide. So this table is um a snapshot of the proposed changes, the various purchasing threshold levels, and I'll give you a moment to look at that.
You go first. Well, I do have a I no, I so I you I I'm I'm a, you know, I I just, maybe this isn't your question, but I kind of operate in round numbers.
Yeah.
Um so is there a way that we could write the ordinance that says that you round down to the next hundred, like sixty-four, three hundred, or two hundred, nine hundred?
Yeah.
I I
If it's one dollar more, then you have to go to
Right, and I I the reason I'm saying round down is that that you're obviously proposing a CPI adjustment. So I was just trying to get it so that it would be more round.
Thank you for the question.
No, I agree, completely agree.
Yeah.
So I I wouldn't recommend putting that in policy, but in practice, we can certainly apply that that round down process.
I think my question was, are these numbers leveraging up with that CPI now?
So what we did was take the state code, which was written ten twenty, twenty-something years ago. And then um we we did the CPI calculations just based on the CPI we use um to come up with the the current numbers.
But those won't automatically increase every year now?
We, that is in the in the
They will, yes.
Yes, and and just to add a little information, I'm sorry, I Ruby is doing such a fantastic job. We actually looked at the the public works um projects. And I think in the last three years, we found maybe two that that fell in that under two hundred thousand dollar, I mean, i- i- we're looking for efficiencies, so there is a balance over over control efficiencies.
So 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 before you leave, let me ask you this question, then so I I heard, I I mean, I heard what you said as far as what what's the problem we're really trying to solve? And I know that it's it's outdated. I understand that. But what what is the problem? And and maybe elaborate on the efficiencies of that.
Uh how many bids did we do publicly last year?
So we arranged like sixty-five formal bids.
So that's the formal solicitations, which requires everyone to write maybe a five-plus page document, advertise it, review all of that, just the amount of time and effort that was going into all of those uh procurement. And then when you think of buying goods or services for a thousand dollars or less, um that was just, it's just eating up so much administrative time to follow those lower dollar amount policies. We're just, we're looking a way to make it more efficient.
Great. I think Mayor Nadolski, or sorry.
Well, and I I it just seems like maybe it it would give less opportunity for us to have to phase projects too, so a a consultant would get the entire project and not just we're gonna do phase one because we can do it here and then phase two and then phase three, so.
Yeah.
Seems more transparent, yeah.
So I liked your question, like what are we trying to accomplish here? Um in my prior career, I remember we we went through a legislative audit. We had a bunch of findings. One of the things that really caught us up was inconsistency between our policy and state statute. Now, I do believe we're required to follow state statute, but we can have our own policies that are more strict is generally. Okay. But the the co- that's the perspective that I'm bringing here. And you hear you'll hear me talk about a lot, and the public needs to hear this. Um and you guys, I think, have already heard it from me, is I'm looking to be a much more streamlined, efficient, and effective government. And when I got here, I I just started, I noticed how much our staff were held back by all of these specifics that were outdated. And I asked the team, I said, I want in in efficient way that we can unburden our team from um really limitations that are holding them back for no good reason, um while not letting go of control and transparency. And so this is what they came up with. And if Justin, I think Justin's really the one that's managing a lot of these contracts and the burden that it creates. But there's been times where, as the mayor, I'm thinking, I don't know how you're getting anything done sometimes with all of the effort we're putting in to just comply with rules that are out of date is just not what I don't, I don't think that's what taxpayers want us doing.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I'll and I can give you like a specific example too. Because there's contractors right now, and there's professional services, and then there's contracting, and I'll give you an example of contracting that is doing some fencing. There's so much work out there that when we go out to bid on for that for a lower amount, these companies feel like it's not worth paying for a bid bond to then not necessarily get the work because they have plenty of work and that they're doing us a favor. So so they don't, they don't even want to apply because it's not worth that to even get a bid bond because they have the work. And so we're trying to get to find the right place of being able to get companies that'll come do the work for us, but yet once it gets to a certain point, then obviously it is worth going out and getting a bid bond and and going after the work, but the environment we're in right now, there's there's a lot of work out there, so it's it's hard sometimes to even get people to bid, or we get one bidder.
Prebid meeting at least, yeah, nobody wants.
So but the the does that help answer your question, Councilman Boy?
Yeah, I just I I was just asking more of the why in the back. I mean, I get it.
Yeah.
That it's, you know, very outdated, but I just wondered. I mean, there's obviously some reason why we'd ask the question to do it in the first place, so. Yeah, no, it's great.
Oh, thank you.
And then fix the zeros for the second.
Last finance to to take care of that. So so as mentioned, we want to um bring the thresholds up to market conditions and benchmark levels. More importantly, the time saved in reducing the previous for purchasing formalities will free up some resources to address other critical operational needs. So in closing, the ad hoc committee believes that adopting these proposed changes will have a positive impact on policies and procedures, ultimately improving the city's overall procurement and contracting process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ruby. Any other final questions? We have this before us on the twenty-first. All right, thank you. We have anything else, we'll let you know.
Perfect.
Okay, up next, uh final item in the work session is an airport update. I see Brian back here. Welcome. Come on up. And Mayor, I don't know if you're or Jared? Mayor or Mayor or Jared or both of you or? Yeah, come on up here, Brian. Come up here by me. Right. Just everyone's grabbing some lunch real quick, but uh you're welcome to, let's give it a minute and then until we have at least at least four of us here, yeah. We're back, okay.
Well, thank you for inviting me today. Happy to be here. Uh been was hired on September twenty-third, so this make marks my just over three months at the airport and with the city. Uh but more importantly, on December twelfth, I officially became a proud member of the citizens of Ogden, so we got, we got a house and they're right up by North Ogden Canyon. Not sure all the directions, but it's like two streets within the boundaries of the city of Ogden, so uh we qualify, so we're, my wife and I are very glad to be here.
Rich's neighbor.
So uh you want an update on the airport, anything specific we're looking for?
Uh maybe to start off with the um events of yesterday and just give us an update on that. And then um I don't know if there's anything else specific. I think um maybe just, yeah, just general direction and.
Yeah, sure. Um so the the directive that I was given is to focus on three uh aspects of the airport. One, to promote local aviation pilots. Number two is commercial air service. And the third was economic growth for Northern Utah and the city of Ogden. So yesterday focused on the commercial air service. And the FAA sees the value and potential growth for Ogden. So they have programmed in uh this four point four million dollar secondary phase expansion of the commercial terminal, which includes uh removing the previous roundabout that let one car drop off at a time. And if somebody left the car, then everyone else behind had to wait. So we're going from from one lane up to six, which will help with that. Currently, the baggage claim is outdoors, so it will now be indoors. The lobby will be larger and the ADA access will be taken care of. That's what we're doing with the federal money. The state has an airport beautification grant that they've encouraged us to put in for. So we've put in for that. And if you've been to the airport, you'll see yard, a chain link fence with barbed wire on top. So we want to change that look with the new terminal to a wrought iron fence that's approved by TSA. So they have approved the uh new upgraded look. We're hoping to get that uh grant from the state to help us put that in. We're also looking to improve some items in the terminal, like the restrooms and the benches. To To make us more of a professional uh, commercial airport feel. And that will do more than any solicitation on my part to attract the airlines to come here. If we have a professional looking facility that's well laid out, then uh, it, it will attract more airlines for the benefit of the residents of Northern Utah. And your airport benefits more than the citizens of Ogden. So thank you very much. And even we've had people from Southern Idaho come down and um, use the airport. So it's very convenient and we want to keep it convenient. And uh, we have plans for expanded parking when we need it, redevelopment area. So we are focusing on the one of those pillars, uh, the commercial terminal. And that's what yesterday was all about, celebration of the groundbreaking.
Questions on any of that, Councilmember here?
Yeah, how are we doing with uh, small GA folks out there? The, you know, it's been a little tense over the years. Uh, how are we doing now?
Very good with the, the uh, local pilots, the light aircraft. So the uh, it was identified in the legislative report also by consultants and our aviation consultant, Dan Reamer, that the airport needs primary guiding documents, which is minimum standards, rules and regulations, rates, fees and charges, definitions and a development guide. In the development guide would be the leasing policy. So I've had forty-one lease renewals for this year. I've read forty-one leases and not one of them is the same. So we're looking for a, a template um, lease that everyone can benefit from. It's also compliant with our FAA obligations. So I'm working with the local tenants. I've had an airport user meeting where I've invited input from anybody that wants to provide input. And uh, we held two of those meetings. It was very well attended. And we had some constructive input, um, some frustration on their part. And we're building the, the bridge of trust. And it's open and I will tell them what's required because we're federally obligated airport. And then our attitude is how can we make this work for the airport and the local pilots? So we've had several meetings. We had one last night from six to nine with this group because most of them worked during the day. The next one is scheduled for tomorrow from six to nine to, to get this out. We were hoping the end of the year, but I just didn't say which year. So um, the, the, we're hoping the end of January to at least get a template out for everyone to look at and give final input before. Uh, that's one of the items, the local pilots and community, the aviation community wanted to make sure that they had uh, at least a look at the document before it was presented to the mayor for approval. And we've got a good team going. We're collaborating very well with the local pilots, the commercial operators out there, including the FAA and TSA. One of the issues that we've addressed for the local pilots at that airport user meeting, they have with the commercial airline service, it's separated the north and south part of the airport. So we worked with TSA on how to open up that controlled area when there's no flights. And it's taken a lot of work for staff and we're going to have to have more staffing out there at each end. But as of yesterday, after the flight at one thirty-eight, the, the site of security identification display area is open for the local pilots to not only taxi through, but they can drive through, they can walk through that area. So we've now connected north and south again when there's no commercial aircraft there. So that's another um, thing that they, the local pilots have asked for and we're able to get both the FAA compliance officer and our TSA inspector to approve that operation. Yeah.
All right, any other?
We have the tower project coming up.
Hear about the tower.
So we have a lot of uh, aircraft operations over a hundred thousand, which puts us very high on the FAA's priority list. They want to keep the student pilots going. They want to keep the aeronautical activity going. So we were placed number two on uh, tower project. Uh, the funding is there a hundred percent by the FAA. The last estimate I received as of today was twelve million. It started out, I hear, at eighteen million. So I'm not sure how it went down, but maybe it went from eighteen to a hundred and twenty million. I'm not sure, but we'll find out. It is on schedule, on the FAA's schedule. Our portion was to remove three buildings, which we have successfully made arrangements with the tenants in those buildings. So they're ready to be demolished. So we can give them a brownfield and um, they'll currently take care of any substructure. And in April, May or June, they're planning on starting their groundbreaking. It will be twice as tall as the tower now. So the cab will sit at a hundred and twenty feet. Add twenty feet for the top and the rotating beacon. So it, it'll be a hundred forty feet tall. And they'll give them better coverage of the entire airfield for safety reasons and uh, two dual runways that you got student pilots on one and, and the heavy uh, jets on the other. So it'll be a vast improvement to uh, their ability to separate traffic. So, great, that's, that's good.
Brian or Jared, do you anticipate any requests for changes to city ordinance in the coming year?
Um, yeah, I'll take that. But uh, yes, we do. We anticipate that we will be making recommendations and bringing before you requests to modify Title Eight. Um, those things are being worked through right now uh, with many of those groups that Brian has already talked to or talked about. But uh, yeah, the answer to that is yes.
Mostly taking the primary guiding documents out of Title Eight. They're in Title Eight, but they're all over the place. We want to pray, take all rules and regulations and put them in one document instead of having to look at different sections. The minimum standards, we want to put in one document. So it's going to be easier for all of us to see what's there. We have several definitions that uh, have different meanings. So we want a definition section. So everyone is on the, the same page.
Any other opportunities for economic development at the airport or airlines that might be coming in? Is that something you can talk about at this time?
Uh, the the airline, uh, let's go passenger uh, traffic. That's dependent upon three different factors and we only have control over one. And the airlines don't have control over the market where the passengers want to go. So the airlines look at where the passengers want to go, then they come up with their model uh, if it fits their break even analysis or production route. And then they look at the airport to see if the facility is something they want to put their name on. So we are doing what we can to improve the facility, not just the facility, but also the service. My, the airport staff is at every flight. We're there to help uh, Choice Aviation, which does the ground service. We're there to help the passengers when they load. We're there to help the passengers when they leave. We keep the snow off of the, the parking lot. We've got safe routes for the passengers to travel. We're going to have uh, continued refreshments during construction. Uh, be difficult to come in that front door. So we have a corridor on the side to get people safely in. So we have increased our customer service. Those two things right there, improving the terminal, improving our customer service. If the airlines decide that the market is in Ogden, that will help them come here. But even they don't set where the trends go. Are the trends to Florida or Disney World or Disneyland? And from here, right now, it's real inexpensive to get your whole family to Disneyland or go visit uh, your relatives in Southern California. But where's that market? Denver, Arizona, that's up to the passengers to decide and the airlines to look at that. But if it is out of Northern Utah, we will be prepared with a professional looking facility and professionally run facility with excellent service. We, we've already started that and um, that takes some time. So thanks to, to Jared and the previous administration who had that foresight and I get to come in after three months and do the groundbreaking. So uh, it's great for me. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Do we, do we have numbers on Breeze with their employments for the year and, and where we, you know, with what was projected and where we are now?
I didn't run the end of the calendar year numbers. I know we uh, we exceeded our ten thousand employments that were required by a long shot. So we actually are sitting very well in the sense that in the federal fiscal year of twenty-six, uh, we will receive up to two-point-six million in funding. That is secured at this point because we, we met our employments. So starting the new calendar year, we get to start back over at zero.
Right.
And, and start to work on that again. Um, as far as Breeze right now, their passenger loads are very well. Now they're we're, we're filling most flights. And so that looks to be great. Um, and we'll continue. We've had, we've had very good conversations with them. They're still very happy with the operation here. They like what's going on. They really like operating out of there. Uh, they're excited about the things that we're doing. Um, will that lend to additional routes and days is to be seen? I guess we'll see. But as Brian indicated, we are doing the things that we can on our side to try to control those items um, and to put a good uh, foot forward. Uh, and then I wanted to touch a little bit as far as other economic opportunities. Yes. We are courting a very large project right now that we're a finalist for out there. Um, and we are seeing almost daily, uh, Brian and I had a meeting today and in the council member graph uh, with another company. Um, but the, the airport is, it's on the map. Um, and we are getting hit almost daily with people. They want to come in and build it out. Um, and what does that mean and what does that look like? They don't quite know yet. And we're not quite to that point yet. But uh, the opportunities are there and we're very excited for the future moving forward. And that airport turning into the gem that I think we all have believed it always could be. Um, and that it will be.
Any final questions as we come up to six o'clock here?
I, I just have a quick comment. Um, you know, I, I, uh, at a state level, I uh, I get to hang around with people that really like our airport as well. Um, and so thank you. Um, in your three months, they already know your name and what you're doing out there. And so thank you um, for, for continuing to elevate it. Anything we can do to help, let us know.
I am pleased to be here and my wife and I are pleased to be uh, in Northern Utah with this group. So we are very happy.
Awesome. Uh, Mayor, yep.
I want to thank Brian, Jared and all the staff for everything you've done. I, the airport was, it's a hot home dinger, wasn't it? Um, sometimes it still is, but I, I just wanted to share a remark that I made that we continue to press yesterday at the event. Is, we're there to talk about a building, but really what built that, it's, it's going to build that is the culture that's behind it. Um, that's where we've placed a ton of our energy is um, is changing that culture and flipping the paradigm from, we're going to do this and you know, like it to what do you need in order to succeed? And then how can we help make sure that the ninety thousand people of the city succeed at the same time? It's a paradigm of we're in business on behalf of ninety thousand people. And, and your success in business is ours and ours is yours. And that is truly starting to take root. We're not all the way there. I get it, but we are absolutely well on our way there. So thank you to the staff and to the stakeholders who are or are not listening. Um, they deserve credit because they, they offered grace. They put the past behind us, just like I'm asking on the, on the last one. They put the, they put the past in the past. And we're focused on the now and into the future. And if we change that paradigm and focus on service, um, I, I am so bullish on this airport. Because when I talk to, to the mayor of Provo and to airport managers down there, they're like, you know how many people are driving past your airport to get to ours? And they have an, absolutely have an abundance mindset. I told this to the mayor just a few days ago. She has an abundance mindset. It's not about scarcity. It's about abundance. There's room for everybody to succeed, including Provo and Ogden.
Great. Any council business, Janine? Anything else?
Just a couple of things. Um, we've got the sustainability conference. If anybody's interested in going that, let us know and get you signed up. Uh, Local Officials Day, if you want to go to that, let us know. We can sign you up. And then um, Tracy, let me know that she did send you some disclosure forms that are required to be filed every year on Adobe Sign. Uh, she didn't get them all back. Um, so if you can check your emails from Trace, well, I don't, it probably comes from Adobe. I can't remember how, it probably comes through Adobe. Uh, okay, anyway. You can go in and sign it and then just return it to her. That's a state requirement and she's anxious to get those back.
Great, thank you. All right, we're adjourned till